Good evening. Welcome to our city council chambers tonight. We have to do a few meetings in a different order tonight. First, let me note that the mayor is participating electronically. He's actually sitting on the front row on a FaceTime. So he's watching those proceedings and participating that way. So it's fun to have all this new technology where we can participate wherever we are. So we welcome the mayor here. My name is Steve Vincent. I serve as the mayor pro town. So what we'll need to do tonight is we need to start with our RDA meeting because there's some items that we need to vote on there prior to our city council meeting. So what we'll do now is turn the time over to our RDA chairman, Mr. Bueller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Call to order, the special meeting of the Redevelopment Association. Note that all members of the body are present, including Ron Bigelow, electronically. As part of our call to order, I've asked Mr. Vincent to provide an opening ceremony.
If you could all stand and replete the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have five items of business tonight in the RDA, and we'll take those in order. Mr. Isaac, would you please introduce Resolution 16-19?
Thank you, sir. The property known as the Fairborn Station Phase III subdivision is currently encumbered with a number of variety and variety of easements. This first resolution allows us to, allows the Redevelopment Agency to accept a quick claim, the Conquestar Gas Company, regarding one of these, these easements existed when we had the old residential and old commercial developments there. And so in order for us to have a clear title to these, to this property, we need to get rid of some of these easements. This first resolution does that request.
This is to accept a quick claim, D, from Questar.
Yes.
To the body, any questions or motion?
I move to approve Resolution 16-19.
Second. We have a motion of the second. Any discussion to the motion? Not, Madam Secretary, could we have a vote?
Mr. Murphell?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item of business is Resolution 16-20. Mr. Isaac?
Thank you, sir. This is to approve a resolution designating a survey area or study to determine the feasibility of a community reinvestment area project. Earlier this year, the law was changed regarding the redevelopment areas and amended some of the rules and regulations of that. This particular resolution authorizes us to conduct a survey in a property surrounding the Fairborn Station area.
Excuse me, could we see that property for the benefit of those that are here?
I think we might be able to show that.
Please continue.
Properties basically located along 35th South, along the Fairborn Station area. This basically, resolution starts in process, if you will, to evaluate that area.
Okay, so this is just to determine the feasibility of establishing a project.
That's correct.
Any questions or discussion about Resolution 16-20?
I move for approval of Resolution 16-20.
Second. We have a motion of the second. Any discussion to the motion? Then maybe please have a vote.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution 16-21. Mr. Isaac?
Thank you. In the, in your packets is a map of the, what we're referring to as the North Central Economic Development Area. Within that area, there's a parcel of property that is now tax exempt and therefore no longer contributes tax increment to the, to the agency. Earlier this year, the law governing the redevelopment area was amended to allow agencies such as us to remove those taxes and parcels from the, from the area. Therefore, this ordinance amends the, the project area plan for the North Central Economic Development Project area and takes out that, those parcels which are now tax exempt.
These are parcels owned by Granite School District.
Yes, certainly, that's correct.
By removing these, then it would balance things out so that we are receiving the full increment to which we would.
That's correct.
Could be in time. Any questions or further discussion about Resolution 16-21? Not, a motion would be in order?
I move for approval of Resolution 16-21.
Second.
We have a motion of the second. Madam Secretary, could we have a vote, please?
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution 16-22. Mr. Isaac, please.
Thank you. This is a resolution approving the purchase of residential property located at 3040 West Leaven Avenue from Mr. Philip W. Lucas.
This is the purchase of another house in our ongoing development just to the west of us?
Thank you. Within the Fairborn Station area, yes.
Any discussion or question with respect to Resolution 16-22? Not, a motion would be in order?
Move for approval of Resolution 16-22.
Second. We have a motion of the second. Could we call a vote, please?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And our last item of business is Resolution 16-23. Mr. Isaac?
Thank you, sir. This resolution is related to the last resolution. This is an agreement between the agency and ICO Multifamily Holdings, which have agreed to reimburse the agency for the purchase of this particular property in the amount of $120,000, which is basically half the cost of the property.
So the ICO Development, which is building apartment buildings, there will be reimbursing the city because purchasing this home benefits their property.
That's correct.
Any questions or further discussion regarding Resolution 16-23?
I move for approval of Resolution 16-23.
Second. We have a motion of the second. May we please have a vote?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no other business scheduled for this evening. One final motion, please.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The RDA special meeting is adjourned.
Now we'll go ahead and call to order the regular city council meeting of West Valley City. And note that Mayor Bigelow is participating electronically and is over here on the iPad with a camera. He's watching and participating that way. My name is Steve Vincent, and I serve as the mayor pro town. We've had an opening ceremony, and want to look out there and see if we have any scout groups that are here that we need to introduce. Doesn't appear that there are. So next on the agenda is to approve the minutes from December 6th.
Move for approval of the minutes of December 6th, 2016.
Have a motion. Have a motion of the second. Any adjustments or changes that need to be made? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have our awards and ceremonies, and this is a special opportunity tonight for us to recognize individuals who have come to the United States and moved into our city and have taken action to learn English, whereby making it better for them to be participating in the community and to be resourceful in gaining employment and participating that way. This is as a result of our former mayor, Winder, and our current council member, Steve Bueller, putting this effort together. It's been really fun to see these individuals come through and introduce themselves and what country they come from, and we truly do see how diverse our city is, and we're grateful for that. So what we'd like to do at this time is all those that are here to receive their English language certificate, if you could line up down the middle behind the microphone there, just line up single file, and somebody's got to be brave and be first. And then as you do, when you come up, state your name and what country you came from, and if you want to just tell a little bit about yourself, that would be great. And once you're done doing that, just kind of go over and stand off to the side, and when you're all done, we'll have you come stand in front here, and we'll take a really nice photograph of all of you together. So let's go ahead and just line up down the middle, and let's have one brave soul start us off.
Hello. My name is Navidullah. I came from Pakistan, and I hope in the, in America. Seven months. Everybody, I'm from here, to all of you.
Thank you. Just make sure you just stand over here.
Hi, my name is Roberto. I'm from Mexico.
Hi, my name is Gregito. I'm from Peru. I'm happy for the dispreconcension. Thank you for everything. Hi. My name is Marisela Sepitraga. I'm from Rundi, Africa.
Hi, my name is Roger Perez. That's my place in Mexico. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen. I'm from Mexico, Chihuahua, Mexico. Thank you for.
I'm Madista Lamas. I'm from Mexico, Ian. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angel Rodriguez, and I'm from Mexico, and I'm staying here for seven months. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Susana Lijalva. I'm from, from Mexico City, and thank you for everything.
Hi, my name is Rosalina. And my friend is Alzaba. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Idalia. I'm from Mexico City, and I'm glad to stay here.
Hello, my name is Fidel. And I'm from Mexico. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Can we call it, have you come up here to the front? And let's have you start right here, and then we'll have you just kind of go to the corner. I gotta go close. This moment's happened. We're getting certificates. We saw one or two more people step up. Okay, everyone could look to the center. Okay? We gotta work with the.
We missed this certificate, but we don't have involved on this.
Okay.
That way it looks like.
Thank you. Everyone look right here. Okay, one, two, three. Turn it. One more time. Oh, there you go. Is there another? No, let's take one more.
Thank you. We also want to thank the teachers and the facilities that take their time to work with these families and these individuals. It truly is important to learn the language so that you can be productive in the community, and we appreciate the effort that you go to because we understand that, I guess, English is a pretty hard language to learn. Seems easy to me, but.
I learned it when I was about two.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to congratulate those who have been here only seven months on their capability to get up and present themselves before us tonight. I have learned foreign languages, and seven months isn't long enough to learn a foreign language. So congratulations to all of you, and especially those who have been here a very short time.
And if I might make a couple of comments, as people were telling us where they came from, there were several countries represented and four continents. And isn't it great that everybody has come into West Valley City? And we're happy to have you here, and we want you to feel welcome. And, you know, we want you, every, all of us to be able to communicate with each other, be good neighbors, and, you know, we're not all going to learn some of the languages spoken in Africa, or Pakistan, or even Chile. So we need to learn to speak English, and we can communicate with each other. It'll help in your employment and your education as you raise your children, seeking health care, everything. It's so important, and we're proud of you. And there are many more on the list that we know of completing the English class that are not able to be here tonight for whatever reason. That's always the case, as we've done this two or three times a year for the past several years. There are many, many people that we've recognized and congratulated, and just happy to have you be part of our city. I might mention that we have other business conducted. It's an open meeting. You're welcome to stay, but we appreciate you so much. We're not going to make you stay. You're also welcome to leave whenever you want to. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is the public comment period of time where we give anybody that would like to come and speak to us an opportunity to express any issues or concerns that they might have. We allow five minutes per individual, up to a total of 30 minutes for this time. Now, this is a time when you can come express your concerns, or you're, or maybe you're happy with something, and you want to let us know about that. But it's not a time for us to have an open dialogue with you, but we will take the information that you bring to us, and if needed, we will have people from the staff contact you if need be. So we had one person that signed up, and that's Josh Cameron. Is Josh here?
Hello. Sorry, I'm fairly new to addressing city councils. I just recently wanted to engage politically many that I work with. I work at the University of Utah Department of Pediatrics Clinical Trials Office. I'm a medical analyst over there. And come November 9th, I saw post-election stress disorder all over everyone's faces. I'm a war veteran, global war on terrorism. I was deployed to Kosovo eight days after September 11th. Spent time in Kuwait, Iraq, Qatar, Kosovo, Macedonia, Bulgaria. And what I found, and one thing that I love, is the internationality. I love your tipping your hat to the internationality, and I think that makes our community stronger. I think another way that we can make our community stronger is by tapping into the future, and tapping into that future is the millennials. Try to get the millennials engaged into the political process. I don't know how much red tape there would be to maybe have a, MTV has a Rock the Vote, you know, can we have some that addresses school assemblies to the juniors and the seniors? People who have to raise their hand to use the bathroom, and then all of a sudden they turn 18 and they're voting, they can, they can join the army, they can fight and die for our country, but they have to be excused to use the bathroom. So I'd like to see how we can actually make our republic far more healthy by allowing people to understand the importance of a voice, and, you know, allow us to give voice to the voiceless. Many here, as we so put it, if you can't really speak English, it's not so much that you can't be productive, but you can't be fully productive within the community. And if you're not voting, you're absolutely not being fully productive. I mean, many of you know, a city-level position can win an election by one vote. I'd like to see how we can, you know, what we can do to reengage the populace for the health of our republic. I'd be happy to contact, see what I can do, trying to pound the pavement. I've got some representative elects that I'll be meeting with later in the month, and those who have ran for office, and just kind of pick their brains and kind of figure out what went into their calculus and see how I, as a regular Joe, can help out. But yeah, thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Josh. I noticed that some came in a little bit late. Is there something that came in late that wanted to address the council this time?
I might say so.
Sure.
I wasn't kidding.
One of our regulars, we're excited for him.
My name's Robert Erickson, Chesterfield. There's been so much work done down there. It's unbelievable, possibly through Mr. Morris and the ordinance effort and everything, but the cleanup from Redwood Road East down into Chesterfield, and then I believe they're working on the panhandlers also, especially around that 21st South, or the 201 interchange right there. I mean, it's getting out of hand, but I would just like to say thank you for whoever's getting that done, possibly paying Morris, you know, but we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will close the comment period and go to the, well, I'll check and see if this, oh, I didn't mention that our assistant city manager is sitting in for Mr. Pyle tonight, so this is Paul Isaac, our assistant city manager. Do you have anything to add tonight?
No, sir.
Anybody from the council? Okay, thank you. We have one ordinance on the agenda tonight, and this has to do with partly what we did in our RDA meeting about the North Central Economic Development Project. And I don't know if you've been able to find that, and if you have, if you could, I don't know, we tried to get it earlier, maybe you've got it now. It'd be nice to see that.
And, Mr. Isaac, do you want to go ahead and?
Thank you, sir. You did articulate the ordinance before us very well. This is simply a ratification of the RDA Board's approval in our last meeting of amending the project area plan for that North Central Economic Development Project area. So this now goes to the city council, and the city council will now ask to approve that or ratify that decision. So on this screen is a map of the area, the, sorry, excuse me, sir, if you wanted to explain that.
This is not the piece, I don't believe. This is the, oh, this is, okay. I was thinking of the area plan.
The area, the area in question is the area that's in the red, it's almost like a, if you think of it as a donut, there's a hole in that, in that area, and that is the area we're talking about. That area now has come under tax-exempt status. It's owned by the Granite School District. And as I mentioned, the RDA approved an amendment to the plan that would simply take that out of the, of the project area.
Thank you. Any discussion to the ordinance or a motion?
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 16-54.
We have a motion of the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have a couple of resolutions on the agenda tonight under number nine. The first resolution is in a contract with West Valley City and Salt Lake County to conduct home investment projects. This allows us to use some money to provide some down payment assistance and some home renovations for.
That's correct.
People who are in need of that service. So is there any, any questions on, on this? Any discussion? And a motion?
I would move for approval of Resolution 16-184.
Second.
We have a motion of the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
The second item on our resolutions is in our local agreement with West Valley City and Salt Lake County again, but this is for some traffic signal maintenance, allowing us to, to, to work with the county to maintain some of those traffic signals and the signalization. So any discussion to this? Or a motion?
I move for approval, Resolution 16-185.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just might point out that we contract with the county to do this maintenance because they have the expertise, and it's already on their staff. We do not have all of that expertise on our staff, and that's why we contracted out.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Isaac, is there a need for an executive session?
No, sir.
We have one more motion that needs to be made?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
And as I mentioned, the RDA approved an amendment to the plan that would simply take that out of the project area.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion to the ordinance or a motion? Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 16-54.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have a couple of resolutions on the agenda tonight under number nine. The first resolution is a contract with West Valley City and Salt Lake County to conduct home investment projects. This allows us to use some money to provide some down payment assistance and some home renovations for.
That's correct.
People who are in need of that service. So is there any questions on this? Any discussion? And a motion?
I would move for approval of Resolution 16-184.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Temp Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
The second item on our resolutions is in our local agreement with West Valley City and Salt Lake County again, but this is for some traffic signal maintenance, allowing us to work with the county to maintain some of those traffic signals and the signalization. So any discussion to this? Or a motion?
I move for approval, Resolution 16-1A5.
Have a motion?
We have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just might point out that we contract with the county to do this maintenance because they have the expertise, and it's already on their staff. We do not have all of that expertise on our staff, and that's why we contracted out.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Temp Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Isaac, is there a need for an executive session?
No, sir.
We have one more motion that needs to be made.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.